The meeting of the Independent School District Number Two Eighty-Three on March Ninth, Monday at seven PM, it's actually seven ten PM. First up, the approval of the agenda. Tonight, we have scheduled the superintendent's report. Discussion items are start times and a childcare update, the math design update, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty mid-year budget update, and twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget assumptions, Peter Hobart temporary easement update, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school calendar, the listening session recap from our February listening session, the discussion of a policy committee of the board, policy development first reading policy five thirty-five, Power School Parent Guardian Web Access, policy development second reading, policy four oh four Employment Background Check. Then we have our consent agenda, and on the action agenda this evening, we have the approval of labor agreement for the principals, the approval of labor agreement for the Community Education Educator Group, the Peter Hobart temporary easement approval, the approval of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year calendar, and the approval of the second reading of policy four oh four Employment Background Check, followed by communications and transmittals and adjournment. Is there a motion to approve the meeting, the agenda? Moved by Laura, thank you, second by Colin. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes six zero. Okay, we're going to adjust our chairs, and we are going to have the superintendent's report.
Good evening, Chair Tombak and members of the board. This evening for my superintendent's report, I would like to highlight a couple of areas that are really connected to students contributing to our community and being recognized for their contributions, and also for a staff member who's done tremendous work here in the St. Louis Park and was recently recognized by a statewide organization. If you didn't have that opportunity to attend the Black History Month celebration here at the high school, our students did a tremendous job developing, producing, and performing at the Black History Month celebration, and if you are interested in catching this, this can be viewed on Park TV's YouTube channel, and that's located at www.youtube.com backslash SOP Cable. I would also like to just take a moment to acknowledge all of our students over the past several weeks who have been spending time down at the Capitol and testifying in front of legislators. We've had several groups of students go down to the Capitol and speaking on a variety of topics, everything from disproportionality in the use of exclusionary practices to creating, reporting distinctions for crimes motivated by bias, and there were several of our ECHO students as well who testified on students' rights for newspapers and newspapers in public schools all across the state. So, thank you to our students who are certainly leveraging and elevating their voice at the state level, but most importantly, really elevating their critical consciousness as it relates to the work that we've been doing around culturally relevant instruction. Next, I would like to acknowledge one of our students, Marta Hill, a senior here at the high school, who recently received the Journalism Education Association of Minnesota's Minnesota Journalist of the Year Award. She has an opportunity to compete for the national competition that will occur this April in Nashville, so congratulations, Marta, and certainly, we're excited about her continued contribution to the ECHO here in St. Louis Park. Lastly, I would like to just take a moment to acknowledge Luis Raffs, who was recently recognized by the Minnesota Division of Early Childhood, and she, at this recent conference, received the Lifetime Excellence in Leadership Award for all of the work that she's done over her career in early childhood. One of the staff members who attended the event expressed their gratitude for her leadership, knowledge, thoughtfulness, and ethics that have allowed all of the staff at our Early Childhood, Early Childhood Special Ed Department to be better educators. So, on Wednesday of this week, between eleven and twelve, there will be a celebration for Luis that will take place at Central, and if you're able to make it, please stop by and congratulate Luis on her recent award. And then that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Osai. First up, or next up, I should say, is the start time childcare update that Luis will be... Director of Community Education will provide.
Thank you, Chair Tombak, Superintendent Osai, and members of the board. Thank you for having me here tonight to talk about our childcare update. As you'll recall, we got a recommendation from our out-of-school-time task force that we had this fall. The upper left-hand quadrant of that recommendation has to do with childcare, and we were directed to have a childcare program at all elementary schools before and after school, and to create a two-tiered fee structure. So, I'm going to talk about next is our two-tiered fee structure. This is something we've never done before. We haven't had to because the times were pretty much the same before and after school, but we know that for families who maybe don't need childcare till six o'clock, that could be expensive. So, what we've done, just to explain what we did, every year, we increase our childcare rates by a couple percentage points to cover our costs. So, we did that again. So, we just, at the hourly rate, we increased our childcare costs by a few percent per hour. So, how that is going to play out for families is, if currently, a family has childcare both before and after school, now, then, it will be about the same, it'll be about another dollar a day for them to have before and after programming. So, it's about the same cost for a family who currently uses both before and after. If a family needs to use, now, starting next year, if a family needs to use before school and then only needs it till four thirty after school, their cost will go down. If a family only needs it from the after-school even till six o'clock, their cost will go Where the cost will come in, I could, there's a lot of different combinations or permutations we could talk about, but the cost, where there will be a cost for families, is for a family who has never had to use childcare before. So, there will be a cost for them if they're not used to having to pay for childcare. So, and we base that on the five-day-a-week rate, the non-school-day rate is only, only went up one dollar a day. So, that's kind of where we're at with the two-tier fee structure. Are there any questions about that?
I just want to stress then that for families who had all-day childcare before, or before and after-school childcare this current year, and they are doing the same thing next year, there will only be a one-dollar-per-day cost increase.
Right, if they need it from six thirty AM till six PM.
But there are a couple of different options in which it could actually be cheaper for them next year.
Correct. If they could pick their child up by four thirty, it will be cheaper for them.
Or if they don't need morning care, for example, because schools are starting earlier.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, thank you. So, is the cost twenty-two fifty for someone who needs before and after-school, for example, in the five-day?
No, the cost is, for five days, it's the very top set of rates, so the daily rate for five days a week, that says before-school, tier-one after-school care, tier-two after-school care, that's the five-day-a-week rate. The rates below that are if a family needs one to four days. There's a little bit of an up-charge for that because of our scheduling.
Oh, excuse me, but if they need to go before-school and after-school, do you combine the costs?
Correct. It'll be twenty-nine dollars a day if they needed it from, yeah.
Will you clarify then, I think I'm starting to track here, but then, if, you said the cost is if you've never used it before, is that because it's brand-new to you using childcare? It's not that there's a cost for new people that are new to, but it's suddenly where people are going to have to incur a childcare cost that they previously didn't because of schedule?
That's correct. There is, just so you know, there is a registration fee every year for every family. So, that's a fee that we have, that's very, you know, that's pretty standard in the business to have a registration fee every year. So, that fee is for every family, including current families, but, right, it's because if a family has not used to having to pay for childcare.
And Lisa, with, I know that there's, it's hard to kind of compare apples to apples, but are these fees generally comparable to neighboring districts?
Yes, they're comparable to the districts around us, like Edina, Hopkins. What I did was compare it to districts that have the early start times, and they're comparable to the districts around us that have early start times.
Thank you.
So, we've created a registration window. This is something we have never done before, and the reason why is because our goal is to place every student registered. And in order to do that, we need to know early when, how many students we're going to have. So, we created, and we did this to create a sense of urgency in families to say, okay, just, you know, get in and register, because currently, we haven't had that. So, people are used to registering in July and things like that, and they always get in, and we're concerned that if we don't know how many families we're going to have by, at least have an idea by like the end of April, then it's going to be difficult for us to hire staff, the staffing that we need. So, that's why we created that registration window. Can families register after the window? Yes, they can. If there's no, like, if you don't register by this time, you're not getting in, that's not where we're at. So, it's just to create that sense of urgency, and so we get people to go in and register. So, we're putting together, we put together a promotion plan, and our goal is to increase brand awareness and to, so people are aware of Kids Place, and know, and to start thinking about whether they are going to need Kids Place after school. Our audience are kindergarten families, K families not currently using Kids Place, K-five families, families who are currently using Kids Place, and district staff, because we need our staff to also understand so they can help families too. We'll be promoting through our regular channels that we have for, you know, through community education in the district, Facebook, you know, Peach Jar, our catalog, things like that. We're working with the communications department to create some more collateral pieces. We're going to look at setting up some time for Kids Place site visits so people can come and visit Kids Place at their school and see what it's all about and what it's like, putting together a roadshow so we can get out and talk to different groups of people, and just having some, you know, students and staff storytelling, if we have the time and budget, looking at creating a video that we can share about Kids Place, so people who maybe can't get there can actually see what Kids Place looks like. And like, I want to just really point out that the only reason we wouldn't have enough slots for students is if we don't get enough staff. That's the only reason. So, we want to be able to hire the staff that we need. Low staff turnover also equals a higher-quality program. Our goal is to retain our current staff and hire new staff into benefits-eligible jobs, knowing that those are the kinds of jobs that people want, they'll stick around when they have them. Jobs that are only two and a half hours a day, especially like the time from like two to four thirty, are not really desirable jobs, and it's going to be very difficult for us to attract people into jobs like that. So, we are working with Human Resources to create positions that bridge from the school day to the after-school time in Kids Place. So, for instance, we might have a position that starts like a playground para during the day, and then they just stay, and they, you know, and then they stay after school. So, now, maybe we can create six-to-seven-hour-a-day jobs that are good jobs that are benefits-eligible. And to do that, we're working very closely with Human Resources, because there are some issues internal to us about doing that. There are different contracts, different schedules, so these are all things that have to be worked out internally, and our Human Resources Department is prepared to do that. So, that's why we want to know, how many of those kinds of jobs do we need, so we can then start creating those positions and working with the principals and things like that. So, we have positions like that for people, our current staff, and for new staff that we are anticipating that we're going to need. Are there any other questions?
So, thank you. I'm, you know, my son, he used Kids Place for K through five, and we used it for him, but he loved it. I think it was a really great experience, and I'm really glad that we offer this in a district, and Shep's made some really good relationships with different staff, so it feels really good to have services like this. And I also appreciate that you did this hard work to try to figure out how to do this. When we were looking, when you and I were on that start times committee, I know that that was one of the things that came up, was how do we do childcare coverage? And we talked about things like tiered systems and making that sort of more affordable, because we heard that from people too. So, thank you for spending the time doing that. And I heard you echo, but just wanted to clarify too, that this is about making it accessible to all children, and I know there might have been some early sort of pre, I don't know, not preemptive, but some communication that went out that sort of suggests otherwise, but that will be clarified too.
That will be clarified, that, yeah, premature and incorrect.
Premature, that's the word I would say.
Yes, premature and incorrect, and we apologize to our families for that.
Thank you.
Thank you once again for putting this together. I'm glad that you, and whoever else worked on this, understands that if we have a low staff turnover, that we have a high-quality program. Once you know how many people that you will need to hire, I was wondering, what are some recruitment ideas besides just posting it on, you know, like the school job application? Like, are there certain areas or ideas of, you know, where you're going to try and get some, you know, workers to apply for these jobs?
Well, I know that through community education and some of our channels, that we have websites and things that we can post on, but maybe, Rick, in Human Resources, I know that there's other places that our postings go out to.
Chair, members of the board, superintendent, as Lisa said, you know, what I would say, our best recruitment in this whole is us, families, the childcare program itself, we're currently fully staffed in childcare, which doesn't happen every place. And so, we hit hard back-to-school nights and, you know, meet-your-teacher nights, and there's, you know, flyers and things that we do to let people know that, hey, have you ever thought about working with, you know, with programs in our schools? And we get good feedback there in addition to all the recruitment we do from Minnesota Jobs and diversity dot com, and Indeed, and our own website, and so we, we get really good, we get really good exposure, but I would still say, for paraprofessionals and childcare workers, our best advertising is word of mouth.
Okay, thank you so much, Lisa.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the math design update, and I think that Dr. Duffy is going to be talking to us about this this evening.
Yes, good evening, Chair Tombak, Superintendent Osai, and members of the board. Tonight, I'm just going to give an update on four issues. I'm going to take some time to talk over the regional studies that we made sure that we addressed as we went through this process, to clarify some pieces about acceleration pathways, to address measurements of success, and also to talk a little bit about the elementary impact, and to look at where we are currently with our math design. The first piece, regional studies, we've looked at various school districts in the west metro of Minneapolis, and we've been consulting them about their math pathways. Other IB schools, other similar pathways to what we intend to offer, they've been offering flex options for deeper learning and not separate classes, very similar to what we are planning to offer in sixth grade next year. Keeping our similar plan would keep us less integrated, less rigorous, and less prepared for acceleration than our neighboring districts. Numerous other school districts provide more common time for teacher collaboration than we currently do. The proposed changes will provide more opportunity for purposeful interdepartmental and intradepartmental As far as acceleration pathways, students in the past have had one opportunity to accelerate a grade level in math if they reached eighty-five percent proficiency on an exam in spring of their fourth or fifth grade year. This year, students of fourth or fifth grade will still have an opportunity to accelerate a grade level in math if they reach the eighty-fifth percentile on an exam in spring of their fourth or fifth grade year. In addition, students can retake the test once if they do not make the threshold the first time. We are currently reviewing the possibility of adding grade-level math acceleration exams for each grade level from fourth grade through ninth grade for students in St. Louis Park. Most math teachers in our system and many mathematical scholars do not recommend grade-level acceleration in math, but rather opportunities for deeper learning. This would be to keep students from missing out on key foundational standards that they may miss by accelerating a grade level. As far as measurements for success, we will engage our staff and students in qualitative ethnographic and case studies conducted by internal and external agencies over the next decade. Disaggregated data on standardized tests like the MAP, MCA, and even local summatives will be consulted throughout the review and over the next decade. Both the qualitative and quantitative research will provide us some longitudinal data. Transformation plans finalized in the spring of twenty twenty-two will include three-year, five-year, and eight-year benchmarks, which will be shared with the school board and community stakeholders at those times. We will bring in regional and national scholars to visit our classrooms, engage with students, and provide input and professional development where necessary over the next eight years. In collaboration with our gifted and talented multilingual learners and special education reviews, we will also ensure that we are meeting success for students that are currently are not being served to the greatest ability. As far as elementary impact, tomorrow, the design team is bringing in twenty-five consulting team members, including teachers and administrators, to review the math frameworks that they discussed in January, and narrow down four curricula to one or two that they would like to pilot in fall of twenty twenty. The consulting team reviewed fourteen curriculums using frameworks from the National Council of Teaching Mathematics and made their own additions using culturally relevant pedagogy and other factors suggested by our students. Last month, numerous students were consulted in the development of these frameworks and in choosing priorities for new curriculum. This spring, the community, parents, students, teachers, will be invited to a viewing session to see the final curriculums and to, that we may be considering for pilots, and will have opportunity to ask questions of the design team and consulting team members and of the vendors. And that concludes my review.
Thank you very much, Dr. Duffy. Any questions, anyone?
Going back to the acceleration pathways, for students that it says will have the opportunity to accelerate if they reach proficiency on this exam at eighty-five percent, how is that test, like, how are the students chosen to take that test? Is it given to all students at like fourth or fifth grade, or is it teacher recommended or parent? And, you know, I'm just, what makes me wonder is, once again, looking at it from a racial equity standpoint, is, you know, there's just some families or students that, you know, maybe don't fully understand it or don't realize what it is, and so I really worry about only certain people taking it when perhaps it should be a grade-wide thing to see who actually accelerates.
So, you'd like to know who takes the test? Okay, that's all right. So...
How are students selected to take the test?
So, we identify students in second grade for talent development, and then we again have local measurements to identify students again in fourth grade for talent development. All students who have been identified in one of those two years then are given an exam to see if they move into accelerated math in fifth grade, and then those students that are receiving accelerated services in fifth grade can take an exam to see if they get into accelerated math going into sixth or seventh grade. You're welcome.
Hi, so, kind of along those lines, down the measurements of success part, it talks about the standardized tests of the MCA, MAP, local summatives, and I'm wondering, are those the only measurements you're using in consulting? Because we know that some of those tests are in fact biased, and I'm just wondering if that's the best place for you to get your data on the success.
I don't think it's the best place to get the data. The first piece of data at the top is the qualitative studies, and as a qualitative researcher myself, I believe that ethnographic and case studies that we do, where we actually hear student voice and teacher voice, is going to give us not just numbers, but also the story behind the numbers. I think seeing both in tandem, however, is important, because otherwise, we run the danger of a single story with just one piece of data. So, having a mix of that, I think is going to give us a rich tapestry of data, hopefully.
Okay, that's good to hear, because I'm, you know, just from past experience, I'm a little skeptical, but seeing that you're right, this is number two on the list, that does give me a little bit more confidence in this. Thank you.
This is a follow-up on that. So, when we look at qualitative data, what words or stories would indicate success over the next few years? I've heard you say confidence before, that students identify themselves as feeling confident about math, that they feel like their math, that their math learning is deeper than it was before. Are those the kinds of things, or are there others?
Yeah, so, I was just reading some work by Dr. Yvette Jackson earlier today, and in it, she talks about the pedagogy of confidence, and in that, she talks about very clearly that we can't expect confidence or joy from our students unless we see our teachers and our principals exhibiting that themselves. So, the story would have to start with our adults. We can't expect our children to do something that adults aren't willing to do themselves. So, strong, purposeful collaborative teaming, vulnerability, as well as finding joy daily in their work, in classrooms, and in their relationships with each other and with children. If we see high levels of that among our adults, we should be able to see that among our children as a byproduct.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I'm still trying to track on this, on the exam part of this, maybe because I've had a kid who went through that, and one of the questions is that, again, it's, so they have to be sort of on a pathway to actually take the test, is that accurate?
Currently, yes.
Okay, but we are looking at that, whether that's the right way to go?
Our gifted and talented enrichment design team and our math team are both looking at that, and there will be multiple other design teams that are looking at that as well.
So, that, it seems like something where, I don't know, it seems arbitrary might be a strong word, but it feels there's a certain component of it that I wonder about. And then, the retake at once, again, can you go into more about that, why it's only like a one-time retake option, or?
Well, we haven't had a retake option before, so allowing a retake option is an additional opportunity for students who may have had some test anxiety the first time around. We, as a system, have not allowed, you know, unconditional opportunities for retakes over and over again, but in this particular case, we're allowing a retake even though many of our teachers and many of the scholars don't suggest that skipping a grade is necessarily the best thing for most students.
I think a couple of weeks ago, it felt like we looked at a policy related to sort of grade acceleration, and it seems very related to that too, and some processes and things, and I'm thinking about parents too, and parents' interest, and I don't know that I have a real specific question, but I'm trying to sort of untangle that and trying to get a better sense, and it sounds like maybe you all are doing that as well.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, what I can say is, we do not want to do anything to impede someone's ability to accelerate. There are students who can and that we believe should be able to accelerate as fast as they need to through our program. That isn't for every student, and if a student demonstrates proficiency in the foundational standards in fourth grade or fifth grade or sixth grade, right now, we have a means through a proficiency exam to show students that they can move more quickly through the system. We are, we are looking to see if we can add more exams later on, and to the point that was made earlier, what's difficult is we're putting a lot of faith in... into one exam to see whether or not a child moves forward.
And I'll be quiet, I promise. Right, I know, right? But I'm really, I'm interested in this stuff, and it really does, and I hear from parents too, who ask similar questions. And so I was going to say that the other thing is that I think I've heard people say is that in gifted and talented, it's not necessarily specific to a course or to, like a whole series of courses. So some students, what we're trying to do is offer the opportunity here for somebody who might be gifted in math but may struggle in literature or language arts or other areas as well, to give them more of a pathway.
Absolutely. We want every child to be challenged to their full ability. We want them all to reach their potential, and we want, we don't want to get in the way of any child going deeper into their learning. That's part of the international baccalaureate model, and it fits our mission perfectly.
You sit in Ken's chair one night, and then you're just taking Ken's spot for questions. Okay.
And one thing that we really do have to point out is the MCA is a mandate. We don't, we as a system are required to do this. Now, the part that really bothers me, and this is a legislative action, parents and students have the right to opt out, and a lot do, but when they don't take the test, the system is held responsible for that because they're just given, what is it, a zero? They didn't, the child did not meet the standard when, we don't know or not, right? Because they didn't take the test. So the system is held accountable on a test that's optional, which is a conundrum that has bothered me for years, and I'm working on it at the legislative level. But in the meantime, it's the hand we're dealt. If we don't comply, we are not eligible for our funding. No, it's more of a statement of support that I really appreciate that the qualitative ethnographic information is at the top of the list because that's who we are in our mission and core values, but we can't ignore the MCA data because the state of Minnesota does not allow us to. The minute they say scrap them, I'm all in, but we're not there yet. It will be in my lifetime, though.
All right. Thank you very much, Patrick. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next up is the mid-year budget update and 2020-2021 budget assumptions. And our Director of Business Services is out sick, and so Brooks Grossinger has kindly agreed to drive back, back to work or just stay at work late tonight to help us?
I did go home. Thanks for having me. Thank you. Thank you, Aston. Yes, my purpose is to provide an update regarding our budget planning for next year, FY21, and then as well as taking a look at our upcoming budget amendment for our current year's budget, which will take place March 23rd. Provided our budget planning process for review here, as well as our budget timeline throughout the year, a little more closer look at where we're currently at, where we're working heavily in both budgets, current year, as well as getting next year's budget prepared for presentation in June, approval in June. So we'll start with our current year's budget update, which will be brought to the board on March 23rd. And we have some mid-year adjustments on the revenue side, which we'll be presenting, starting with general education aid and increase in the area of $3,000, $300,000. This is due to increased enrollment up from what we budgeted last year. We have some transportation integration aid. This was a line item that was missed on the original budget, and it's $700,000. Special education aid, we're looking at increase of $600,000. This was due to some formula changes by MBE and the state that took place beginning of this year. And then we're also looking at our interest earnings, and it's kind of historically been underbudgeted there, so increasing that more in line with what we're expecting to receive. And then in regards to next year's budget assumptions, the Finance Advisory Committee, I think, brought forward some recommendations last month, and these included our revenue drivers, the main one being enrollments. We're looking at a 46-43 enrollment projection, using our known 2% increase to the basic funding formula, and then we anticipate holding the special education revenue current once we adjust it, holding that even. Other recommendations included holding student fees, focusing on managing our main expenses of salaries and benefits, and then looking at our fund balance policy, changing the language of making that 6% a minimum rather than a target number. And one additional item for the FY21 budget would be a contingency fund for possible unknown costs with the start time changes, and we would review that this, next year at this time. FY21 capital budget, we've taken requests for that, and we allocate it based on these items, site allocations, which are based on student counts, facility allocations based on square footage, technology, software licenses, equipment, copy releases, athletic uniforms and equipment, both at the middle school and high school, food service equipment replacement, textbooks, musical instrument cycle, furniture cycle, and standardized testing software. And then we have some carryover projects that didn't get completed or won't get completed this year that we originally budgeted for this year. Sound systems at some of the elementary buildings, dump truck, and then additional signage due to construction. And then some one-time items, a food delivery truck and storage sheds. Our next steps would be March 23rd to bring to you a budget proposal for the general capital fund for FY21, and also to provide the mid-year budget updates for FY20. And then ending with June 22nd, when we present our final FY21 budget for approval. And that was, that concludes the budget update.
All right, anyone can ask Brooks questions, but remember, we would like him to be willing to come back. So let's not be difficult. Anybody?
I won't be difficult. I'll be supportive, but I'll say thank you. Again, we appreciate so much of the effort that goes into this. As somebody new to the board, I know that it's a very complicated thing, looking at allocations, looking at numbers projecting. I know that there are people that are working at the capital right now to see what else can be done for funding for schools, but you have to kind of operate with what we think is going to be the case, and that's a challenge. So I'm just going to say a note of thank you and appreciation for your work and for everybody who looks at this stuff because.
Thank you for being on the advisory council.
You're welcome. Glad to have good people there.
Okay, now that the love fest is over, thank you very much, Brooks. Appreciate it. You can go back home now. Okay, now Superintendent Osai is going to give us some information about the Peter Hobart temporary easement update.
Good evening, Chair Tombeck and members of the board. As you recall, earlier this fall, there was a city engineer that came and presented information about the Dakota Bridge project that required the city to access a portion of the land at Peter Hobart. At that time, the school board, you all expressed some concerns, particularly around students potentially being injured on the site of the construction area. And I know Tom Bravo, our facilities manager, expressed concerns about the soil and if they unearth, you know, soil that required repair, that the city would be responsible for the cost of any source of repair. We communicated that information back to the city and ultimately didn't receive a response initially and received a imminent domain letter from the city, notifying us that the city would be acquiring our property to start the construction project. At that time, we engaged Capital One, who has a financial interest in the Peter Hobart facility due to their lease purchase of the fact that we use Capital One for our lease purchase of the addition at Peter Hobart. And Capital One was able to negotiate with the city in a manner that now has the city agreeing to both of the requests that we had around a demnification, so the city will take responsibility for anything. And I think within the agreement that you have in your materials, anything that is not, you know, careless or negligent on our part, that the city would be responsible for any damages that were caused, and they will be responsible for the environmental issues that may come up as a part of this project. So I wanted to just share that information, and later on in the action agenda, we'll be asking the school board to take action on the updated agreement so that the city can begin to work on the Peter Hobart land and starting the development of the Dakota Bridge project at Peter Hobart. Any questions?
Superintendent Osai, I take it that with that agreement that we are asked to approve, our attorneys reviewed it and gave it their okay, the districts, and did Capital One?
Yes, Capital One's in-house legal counsel supported us to get to where we are with the agreement.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Colin, are you sure? Thank you very much, Superintendent. Okay, 2021-2022 school calendar. Let's get this done. Mr. Crier, Director of Human Resources, will be presenting a couple of options for us. I know, he got off so easy. You only wish you were so lucky.
Okay. All right. Chair, members of the board, superintendent, we have two options that we'd like you to consider for the 21-22 school calendar. And for those of you that are watching your first board meeting, we tend to try to put two calendars before the board, one for the year that's going to be coming up for the following fall, and then one for the year after that. So families have information about where we believe we're going and what we think our calendars would look like in the following year. And then each year in the fall, we come back and we take a look at what we had recommended two years ago and see if that's still what we want to do. And so this calendar will not be for this coming fall, but the year after that. We're looking at some very interesting things with Labor Day being very late and coming right on top of the first day of the Rosh Hashanah holiday and religious observances that go along with that, which take many students and some of our teachers and paraprofessionals out of school on that first day in their observances. So the calendar that we have in front of you, there's, you've seen some of these before. We went and got some additional feedback. We also polled teachers and brought together a larger calendar committee and looked at our options. And in the first option that's up in front of you today, we have, I would say this option is characterized by trying not to make the school year go late, late in July, and also trying to make a reasonable winter break that isn't like right on top of the Christmas Eve start to the holiday that many of us observe. So to make this all happen, we ended up having a six-day opening week that would allow one of the professional development days in December to be moved during opening week so that we would gain back a day of instruction in December. And we put an extra day of break into that Wednesday of the winter break in December, and everything else kind of runs a traditional calendar. I would, and then we're able to have students out on the ninth and teachers out on the tenth, all right? So not too crazy different, but it's, you know, working with that Rosh Hashanah holiday and moving some things around to make that happen, that seemed to be very well received by students, and it was the preferred calendar by teachers as well. We did have another option we were asked to look at. Many teachers have always said, you know, the two-week winter break is important. Feedback to the superintendent by students was that, hey, we really like the two-week winter break. Many of our families who travel over winter break, especially who travel outside the United States to go back to, families that are out of the state like the two-week winter break. So we did want to have an option that started after the first day of Rosh Hashanah, had a two-week break. And the only way we could do that, put students getting out on June 14th and teachers ending on the 15th of June. Given these two choices, 66% of the teachers said, we'd like option one and not, and not the option that puts us, you know, so far into June. So our recommendation to the school board tonight would be the option one calendar that we first talked about that has school ending on June 9th.
Okay, Rick. Thank you. I can say that I did a lot of polling of families and other parents, and folks came to me. And I think that, as unscientific as this would be, they would certainly prefer option one too. I think that there are a lot of families who would have, I mean, concerns about basically having an entire half a month out of school. That option two is 16 days out of school, including the weekends. And then, again, as you mentioned, the not getting out until the middle of June, that just seems like the time off in the wrong places from what I heard from a lot of families. So I'm thrilled, actually, that you had some solid consensus, pretty much, as much as we all like options, there was some, is 66% consensus? I'm not sure it is, but at least it's informative, so. Anybody else have any questions? Does anybody want to make a plug for option two? I dare you.
I do not want to make a plug for option two. I want to make a plug for option one. I think that, I think that this is very sensible, and I think I said this maybe the last time this calendar was up, was that it's, is it ideal to not, I mean, people like having two weeks, but in this, in this particular year that we're looking at, we can't start early because of construction, we have that Rosh Hashanah day, and we, and Labor Day is really late, so this is the best one for this particular year, and we can go back to looking at other calendars in the future.
Agreed. The calendar doesn't always allow us to abide by an ideal situation, so we have to work with what we've got. Okay. All right, then we will look forward to a motion for approval of one of these in the action agenda. Thank you very much. My gosh, that was so easy. Wasn't that like the easiest calendar discussion ever? No, you don't. Nope, time's up. Pete left the podium, forget it. All right, we're cruising along. Next up, February 2020 Listening Session recap. Ann Casey, our vice chair.
The school board, three members of the school board held a listening session on Saturday, February 29th, here at the high school. Heather Wilsley and Colin Cox and I were all there. If you remember, we don't ever have a quorum or more at a listening session. It's a conversation. No action is ever taken at a listening session. We had two topics brought forward to the board's attention. The first topic was a group representing the SLP Seeds organization who wanted to discuss the idea of using the kitchen here in the high school. We had speakers at the open forum at our last board meeting speaking to that same question, and I believe that they have been in touch with Tom Bravo about that request. And that was, they didn't ask for any particular follow-up besides that. The second topic was the math redesign. We had a parent who came with some concerns about the process, including opportunities for community input, access to acceleration pathways, what neighborhood districts are doing, and how we will measure success. And I passed these questions on to Superintendent Osai, and I appreciate that Dr. Duffy was able to address all of those questions in his presentation tonight. So thank you. So thank you, Dr. Duffy. I just want to say I'm really grateful to the community members who come to our listening sessions. We had an excellent conversation. I think our next one is, I looked this up, Wednesday, April 29th, at 6:30 at Aquila. And in the meantime, don't forget that you can reach out to board members anytime. Our email addresses are on the school district website. And we also have a school board message line that you can leave a message for the board, and that number is 952-928-6040. So don't wait till the next listening session to be heard by the board. So, thank you.
All right. Well, while you've got your finger close to the mic, Vice Chair Casey, we want to discuss a potential policy committee of the board.
So as board members know, we've been kind of on this aggressive policy review schedule to kind of get our policy manual in order. And as you'll see, I think you probably also saw in your board book, that the, I just want to show the yellow one that Flower and I were working with, the highlighted one. There's just been a lot of work that's been going into the policy review. We've got some policies that still need some close reading, and we also, I think we, a couple of meetings ago, we discussed kind of a need to, or a desire to look at policy buckets more as a whole. We kind of talked about the 600 series, there being some wanting to look at them for consistency and to make sure that they're all in line with our strategic plan. So I would like to propose that we set up essentially a temporary advisory committee of the board that would catch us up on some of that work. To me, the goals would be to sort of create a checklist for policy review, so that when we go into any policy, we kind of have an idea of how we ensure compliance with state law and with our current policies and with the goals of our mission and our strategic plan. Another goal would be to, like I said, examine all those policy buckets as a whole, to look at, look for inconsistencies or redundant, or we had a redundant policy a few weeks ago that we just eliminated altogether, to look for things like that. And then ultimately, to reduce the amount of time that we end up having to do policy work here at the table with all the staff and everybody here, and so that we can kind of catch up on that policy review. So what would stay the same, if we did create a committee, would be that the board would still have a first and second read on every policy. There'd be opportunity for discussion, just like we have now. Also, policy committee meetings would be subject to open meeting law, so we'd have to post those meetings and post agendas for those meetings. So I just want to make sure that what I'm suggesting would be as transparent as possible, but also just increase the efficiency of our work. Our current policy 203 doesn't allow for a standing committee, only temporary or special committees. I think that this, I kind of envision this to be kind of a few months, so we can kind of get up to date and internally consistent. And then we could go back to our sort of regular practice of, and our regular one-to-three review, one-to-three-year review cycles for all of our policies as a whole board. That said, if everybody likes this policy committee, lots of our neighboring districts have policy committees, and there's certainly, we could look around for models and guidelines, and if at that time we wanted to amend 203, I mean, we could have that conversation. But I think for now, a temporary policy committee of three members of the board that would kind of allow us to catch up and establish a more efficient review timeline. So that's kind of my thinking.
Are you volunteering to head up this temporary policy committee?
I would be willing to do that if that is the will of the board. I'm certainly not wedded to that if there are other people who really want to take this on, but I would certainly be willing to do that, sure.
Just to highlight why this is important, we're a body that governs by policy, and when we have policies that have not been looked at for a decade or longer, we are just really far behind. And a few years ago, we tried getting them back on track. We took a really deep dive into it, and then we had to pause. And what I appreciate about the idea of what Ann is recommending is it gives us a chance to accelerate a little bit faster for something that really is important. So thank you, Ann, for your thinking and leadership.
Very good. So just to clarify, you said there were like a lot of models that we could be looking at, but in some ways, would this operate like a board meeting? Or do you think this will be, or do we, it won't be like some of our learning design committees or other sort of community committees? This would be probably more of a board-level committee, is that?
Right. It would be like a board meeting with an agenda. But it would certainly be an opportunity for, if we had a staff member who needed to speak to a particular policy, or if we wanted to invite, you know, a community member or student or something who had particular insight into this policy, that is certainly something we could do. But the board would be running the meeting. It wouldn't be like a community committee.
The committee would be running the meeting, not the board, per se, yeah. And no board action would ever be taken at a meeting, because there wouldn't be a quorum of board members, so.
And the members of the board would just stop in and do, like, say, I'm interested in five policies. I would do those five policies and then step out, and somebody else would step in? Or would the people stay on there the whole time?
I think that depends on how people want to volunteer. I could see both of those things. I could see, like, what I would suggest is that if we want to go ahead with this, is that we meet, we find some people who kind of want to just be at the beginning of this and meet once even soon, to kind of set the parameters and what the goals are. And then, yeah, if we were going to look at, like, the 600 series, and there were certain board members who had, you know, an interest in that, that would be great. Or it could be the same people.
But no more than three?
No more than three at a time, right.
I'll say that, for reasons that, you know, Ann, you and Karen were very thorough in stuff, I really like this idea for other reasons, is that it integrates newer board members into the process of policy development and review quickly, at least at this point. Depending on whether we continue it or not, I think it's a great way to, a lot of people take a deeper dive into what policy review and development looks like. And then also, because these would be open meetings, it creates additional transparency and opportunities for members of our community to also come forward if there are particular policies that they are interested in, and they see through the notice of the meeting that committee is going to be discussing, say, the discipline policy or the technology policy, that people could show up and listen or weigh in. Because again, this is not, would not be subject necessarily to the same structure of a board meeting. So there would be some flexibility for community input, potentially. I'll stress that St. Louis Park has not traditionally done committees. They haven't had a temporary committee for a long, decades, okay? So this will be somewhat new, and I would appreciate patience from the community as we figure out what this looks like, and just flexibility and patience for each other as we develop the efficiencies and effectiveness of something like this. But I'm all for trying it. Our strategic delimiters say that we will not let past practice dictate, you know, how we do things in the future, and we should be risk takers to model this for our students. So I'm all in favor of giving this a try. So at the risk of putting people on the spot, we could kind of do a call for other volunteers at this point, or if you would be interested in working on this committee at some point or in some way, perhaps maybe the best thing to do is please reach out to Ann within the next couple of days. And then, Ann, you can kind of see based on folks' interests whether they would be interested in starting right away, right now, or whether they have a few policies that they're particularly interested in, and then they can come in when that scheduling allows.
That sounds great.
All right, let's do it. Thank you so much. Okay. What a fantastic transition to the first reading of policy 535, Power School Parent and Guardian Web Access. Superintendent Osai and Flower, yes?
I guess I'll start. So as Vice Chair Casey mentioned, her and I have partnered to, oh, no, wrong policy. This is first reading. So, but it's still along what we were discussing previously. The recommendation, as we started to look at this policy more with district leaderships such as Tom Marvel, our Director of Information Services, Patricia Magnuson, our Director of Business Services, you'll see that there aren't any edits to this one. We feel that this is actually another policy that we can get rid of, since most of what is in the policy can be a disclaimer that is included in forms that are given to parents at back-to-school nights. Tom, is there anything you'd like to add?
Just the fact that we have a policy, we didn't feel it was right to have a policy about one specific product. And if you look, that this was developed, I think the last time we looked at was 2005, when we first implemented Power School. So a lot of it is procedure, and a lot of it is just like Flower said, just disclaimer information about what we hand you, information about analog in your student's account. It's your responsibility to keep, say, not give it to somebody else, all of that sort of thing. So it just didn't seem like we needed a policy around this specific thing.
And I think, Tom wasn't speaking into the mic there, so I'll just reiterate the part where about, this is just a policy that basically pertains to a product that was implemented when that product was brought into the district 15 years ago. And so I think that, you know, everything that you say makes sense, and for those of us with kids in middle school and high school in particular who've used Power School, I can echo that it doesn't make sense to have any of this in a policy. And then I think that we should also be informed by this a little bit, that we're always potentially bringing new products into the district, and that that doesn't necessitate a policy, lest we just set ourselves up to have to be removing a policy at some point or get behind in the review of a policy for something that doesn't need to have a policy. So I've said policy many times. Does anybody have any other comments about this? Okay, so we can look forward to potentially scrapping this upon second reading, but let that be something y'all consider for next time. Okay, now, Ms. Cutina, you are up for policy second reading 404.
Now, policy 404. So partnered with Vice Chair Casey, we were playing definitely a lot of catch-up since we last reviewed this in 2006. So there were a lot of changes that were in MSBA's policy, model policy that we, or in their red lines that we needed to catch up on. So you'll notice that there are changes in the purpose statement, in the general statement of the policy. We also kept some of our changes that we presented for first reading at our last meeting. Reviewed this one more time with our Director of Human Resources, Rick Cryer, and feel like it's in a better place than it was at first reading.
Yeah, if I can just, I mean, it looks like a lot, but what I will say is that the vast majority of the changes are all relating to one specific change that happened in the state law that is reflected in the purpose statement there, which is to include individuals who are offered the opportunity to provide athletic coaching services or other extracurricular academic coaching services to the school district regardless of whether any compensation is paid. So that language was added. And then throughout, had to be, the policy had to be updated to include that language or to use the word "individuals" instead of applicants, because not everybody's applying for employment. So most of these changes are just reflecting that one change throughout, but it was a lot of different places. And then, as Flower said, I know Rick looked at a couple of the other changes that were specific to us, and I don't know if you have anything that you want to add, Rick, but mostly, there were just a couple of things that were to make it in line with our practice.
Yeah, I was just going to echo that. It wasn't that we changed things in the policy that we weren't doing. We changed things in the policy, and it just reflected. Because we do background check volunteers, and we background check coaches for sports and things, so we do all that. It just got called out.
Just to be clear, when we say volunteers, in this case, we're talking about people like volunteer coaches, or it's volunteer academic services kind of thing. So we're not getting into the nitty-gritty of like volunteering for the Fairs and things like that. This is really sort of about those academic experiences.
Yes, we don't, we do not background check parents or guardians of current students, but we do background check people who don't have kids in our school who ask to volunteer in our school. So we do do some volunteers, and then anybody that would be assisting with the football team or that, you know, if they're hanging around, they're volunteering, and so they would get a background check as well.
Rick and others, correct me if I'm wrong, but when you mentioned like volunteering for Fairs and things, those are often volunteers that are called for by PTOs, and so the district does not have any relationship with the PTO's call for volunteers. Is that correct?
That would be correct, and we wouldn't even know about it, yeah.
Right, right. So the two separate entities there. Well, I just want to give a huge thank you to Ann and Flower for digging into this and finding these necessary changes and corrections. I really think, Ann, you should consider doing more policy work. So thank you very much. Maybe there'll be an opportunity for you to do that. Okay, we are moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. I think I want to withdraw that.
Is there anybody else who would like to make a motion? Ann, is there a second? Second by Karen. All in favor? I, okay, passes 7-0. Do I need to ask for discussion on that, Karen? Nope, passes 7-0. Okay, thank you. Next up, the action agenda. It is recommended the school board approve the employment agreement between Independent School District Number 283 and the Principals Group for the 2019-2020 and 2020-2021 school years as presented. Rick, what can you tell us about this agreement?
So again, this is one contract. We have 11 contracts that we work with and bring to the board. There are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 contracts that are on the July 19 to June 21 schedule. These were the last two contracts in that schedule. You just can't get them all to the board, you know, before now. And so thankfully, the Principals Group and the Child Care Educated Group are very patient folks. We didn't make too many changes with the Principals contract, but the thing that delayed us putting together the Principals contract was that the state law changed regarding layoff and unrequested leave of absence in the tenure statute. They just deleted it. They just, the legislature deleted the tenure statute that handled unrequested leave and left it up to individual school districts to negotiate that. So we took our time, and we created a, I think, a thoughtful process for how would we do this if we weren't mandated to do it the way the state had laid out in the previous statute? And I think we have a better product for ourselves, and that it makes more sense for a district of our size. And so that just, it took, I would say, a couple, probably four meetings of discussing layoff language, because that also gets very close to people's hearts, so. Everything else is pretty standard. We did an increase on wages that was similar to what we did for teachers. There were some health insurance increases, and beyond that, it was a pretty standard rollover, just like we've done with all of our other contracts.
Okay, great. Any questions for Rick before we make a motion? Okay. Any, is there a motion to approve the Principals' labor agreement?
So moved.
Moved by Heather, second by Colin. Any discussion? Any discussion? Well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Well, approved seven zero. Next up, approval of the labor agreement with the Community Education Educator Group. Is there anything to add then on this?
Again, this, this, whoa. This, you know how parents can't say that they have a favorite child? This could be my favorite group. The childcare educators are so sweet and we get together and we have about two meetings and the contract's done. And so we worked very well together. We did basically, you know, this is what we're doing with everybody else. Is it okay if we do this with you guys too? Yes, that's awesome. And we settled up on the, up on the contract. We did take care of just a few minor things around deferred comp eligibility and some things like that that we've done with some of our other groups and they were very pleased, so.
Wonderful. Okay. Any questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the Community Education Educator Group Labor Agreement?
So moved.
Moved by Heather.
I'll second it.
Second by Colin. Any discussion? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, passes seven zero. Rick, thank you very much and thanks to the Principals and our awesome community educators whose praises have been sung tonight for more great negotiations. Okay, Peter Hobart Temporary Easement Approval. It is recommended that the school board approve Peter Hobart Temporary Easement as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Anne, second.
Second.
Second by Ken. Giving it, this one to Ken. Any discussion? Thank you, Capital One, for a few things.
What's in your wallet?
Yeah, what is in your wallet? That's good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes seven zero. All right. Approval of the 2021-2022 School Year Calendar. Is there, would anyone like to make a motion for either of the options?
I would like to move to, to approve option one, calendar option one, which has the shorter winter break that gets us out of school on June 9th, eh, June 9th? Okay.
All right, there is a motion to approve option one. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion or further discussion on option one?
Thank you.
Yeah? All right. All in favor of approving option one?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes seven zero. So easy. I will say, it was only so easy though because of all of the groundwork that Rick did, particularly in getting feedback from the teachers, students, parents, everything. We don't like to make these decisions in isolation, so thank you so much.
There was more than Rick, there was many fingers.
All of Rick's fingers and all of Rick's team's fingers, yes. Thank you so much, everybody. Okay, and next, for a big agenda, we are doing a really great job tonight, everyone. Approval of second reading of policy 404 is recommended that the school board approve the second reading of policy 404 Employment Background Check as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Heather.
Second.
Second by Laura. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any discussion? I should have said that first. Was there a discussion before we voted? I know there was no discussion. We all had favored it, so passes. Any opposition? No, passes seven zero. Okay. Communications and transmittals. We can start on that end of the table this evening.
Zero.
Zero. You, you just talked so much last time, but you're, clearly your schedule dictates that we have to give you 20 minutes for communications and transmittals every other meeting.
Every other meeting.
Yes, okay.
I have just a one update from the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. We had a meeting last week. There were two presentations. The first one was by Neil Kashkari and Justice Alan Page, retired from the Minnesota Supreme Court. They were discussing their proposed constitutional amendment. Their slides are available and they did have a, the presentation was specific to AMSD, so their slides are available on amsd.org. All, all of the presentations that are given at AMSD are on their website under meeting materials. So if you look at meeting materials under board meetings for the March Board meeting, the slides are there. There's been a lot of discussion about the amendment. I know there's going to be a lot more coming. I'm guessing that AMSD will be taking some kind of position on the amendment. So we do have a member of the AMSD Legislative Committee in our midst, Superintendent Osai. So as members, we have a voice in what that position is. If you have any thoughts or questions, please share them with Superintendent Osai. The second presentation, also on their website, was from Pelsby, the Professional Educator Licensing and Standards Board. And they were basically just providing some updates on what the work they're doing right now on, in the areas of cultural competency training, tiered licensure, and some of the proposed changes and teacher shortages and then just upcoming legislation. Speaking of legislation, AMSD's Day at the Capitol is next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow. I'm planning to be there for at least part of the day, so if anyone wants to join me, let me know. I think that deadline for RSVP is Friday, this Friday, so think about that as all day. But there's different pieces of it, different chunks you can go to. So I think that's it.
I did attend the Health and Wellness Committee and that was, I think it was last week Thursday? But anyway, went very well. We're doing an assessment on the, the district, doing a health and wellness assessment. And we will get through that this, in the next couple of weeks and then look for some grant writing in the summer. So we're moving along.
My meetings are tomorrow.
My meetings are tomorrow.
I have two items. The first one, I was able to attend an, an educational symposium hosted by the Minnesota House of Representatives titled Bridging the Gap: Eliminating Racial Disparities in Education So Children Can Reach Their Full Potential. This past Friday, March 6th. It was a day packed full of information and perspectives. Our Superintendent Osai participated in the superintendent panel, which included, I believe, four other metro area superintendents. I'd like to say that I felt he spoke honestly and very knowledgeable about the racial disparities in our school, but also left me feeling with hope that SLP has to educate all of our students, including the things that we are currently working on. Two takeaways from that, I was left feeling hopeful because the racial disparities in education discussion is happening and being acknowledged at the legislative level, so definitely hoping to see some movement and some positive either policy or funding come out of that. And then second, I was left feeling action orientated by the presentation, The Cost of Closing Achievement Gaps, a case study which was given by the Superintendent of ISD 622. And what happened in that presentation was it highlighted programs that that district is implemented that are targeted at closing the gap. And I was very proud of SLP because many of the programs that were mentioned are ones that St. Louis Park already does, such as the BAR program for ninth graders, providing after-school activity buses so students can participate in all parts of school. So it, it gave some ideas, but I was like, oh no, we're already doing that. Yay! The second thing that I want to communicate is I am the liaison to the senior program and the senior program hosts a birthday party in the park every second Wednesday of the month at the Lennox Center. According to their ad, food, entertainment, laughter, and great conversation are all part of the party. And if it is actually your birthday, you will be a guest of honor and entered in a drawing for a prize. All members of the senior program can attend for free. And the next birthday party in the park is this Wednesday, March 11th, from 1:30 to 3:00 at the Lennox Community Center.
So tonight was the early childhood advisory committee meeting, but we had a pre-meeting, so Mary Jouberry kindly forwarded the materials to me and I am continually impressed by that group of parents and educators working together for our littlest learners, so. They do a good job.
And I just wanted to end the evening by giving a shout out to so many people in our district who are working very hard to stay on top of all of the news and to make preparations for the coronavirus potentially arriving in our area. There are, you know, plenty of families who understand that it's, you know, just a cold or flu-like symptoms and they don't have to be so worried, but I just wanted to, for the folks who may be listening, stress that we actually do have several, several vulnerable children in our schools. And for these students, this is potentially very life, can be a life-threatening virus if it does come into our community. So on behalf of all of those students and communities and families who live in multi-generational households with higher-risk folks who they come in contact with, the district is taking this very seriously. And we are listening to all of the guidance that is coming out of the CDC and the Minnesota Department of Health and the Minnesota Department of Education, but engaging in any extra conversations and steps that need to be taken for the protection of our students and families. So I just wanted to stress that and to give a tremendous thank you to our, to Patricia and Rick and Tammy who are working very hard on this, obviously with Superintendent Osai, but then all of our principals, our nurses, our health aides. We've got so many people who are getting into the nitty gritty of what this would look like in our community, so thank you to everyone. And with, take a motion to adjourn? Oh, yes. Oh, oh my gosh. Yes, of course. While we are saying thank you, let's give another big shout out to Sarah Thompson for her incredible work this year on the Children First Breakfast, which was attended by so many. It's really the who's who of St. Louis Park, the place to be in St. Louis Park, early in the morning in March. And so it was usually the job of the Children First Executive Director with support of the executive committee, but this year Sarah took on that job as the Executive Directors. I personally loved hearing from our high school and middle school students about their advocacy work around environmental issues in St. Louis Park. And so it just, it was, you did such a beautiful job, Sarah, of actually connecting why we do what we do to empowering students to advocate for themselves and to succeed in that advocacy. So it was a wonderful morning and we got to meet Margaret Gano, the new executive director, who will take over this job from Sarah for next year, so. So, thank you. Hopefully. Yes, absolutely. All right. So with that, thank you so much, Heather. I can't believe I forgot, but yes, we'll take a motion to adjourn. Moved by Ken, second by Colin. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are done. Passes seven zero. Thanks, everybody.